Mr. Chairman, we're on the air.
The October 10th meeting of the Long Hill Township Planning Board is called to order at 7:31.
You need to speak into your microphone a little better. I barely hear you.
The October 10th meeting of the Long Hill Township Planning Board is called to order at 7:31. Can we have the announcements, please?
Absolutely. Number one, call to order and statement of compliance. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by posting a copy of the public meetings, hearing dates on the municipal bulletin board and website, by sending a copy to the Echo Sentinel newspaper, and by filing a copy with the municipal clerk. Number two, standard board procedures. Any hearing conducted by the board is a quasi-judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Number three, meeting cutoff. Announcement is made that as a matter of procedure, it is the intention of the planning board not to continue any matter past 10:30 PM at any regular or special meeting or hearing of the board unless a motion is passed by the members then present to extend the meeting or hearing to a later specified cutoff time. Number four, electronic devices. All in attendance are asked to mute cell phones or any electronic devices as to not interfere with the proceedings. Pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And roll call. Mayor Lavender?
Present.
Committeeman Ray?
Present.
Ms. Dill is excused this evening. Mr. Hands?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Present.
Mr. Malinowski?
Here.
Mr. File?
Here.
Vice Chairman Richardson?
Here.
Chairman Sandow?
Here.
Chairman, we have a call.
Thank you. The meeting tonight, the only item on the agenda is a hearing on the draft master plan, and I would like to make the following announcement. This hearing is conducted pursuant to New Jersey statute in order to give members of the public an opportunity to make comments on the proposed master plan, which will replace the 1997 master plan. As you know, this master plan has been developed by two advisory committees to the township committee and by committees of this planning board over a period of 10 years. This process has involved three planning consultants, several attorneys, almost every member of this and previous planning boards, and many citizens of the community who served on the advisory committees or participated in the open public forums or responded to the Internet survey. Not all matters discussed over this period have been unanimously accepted by the board or by some members of the public, and there are certainly differences of opinion. Divergent opinions have been received and have been debated. But we can only have one plan, and this is the plan that the board believes is the best alternative for the future of the community. That is the responsibility of this planning board. There have been some hard choices, but the choices have been made to set a direction for the ordinances, which will be the final authority for development of Long Hill during the next decade. We are past the time when we can continue to debate divergent points of view. We are here tonight to hear comments from members of the public. These comments must be related to the draft that has been available since September 28th. In that regard, please begin each of your comments by citing the specific page and line number that you will be commenting on. Vague or generalized comments will be heard, but you have an obligation to help the board understand precisely where and how your comment will help to improve the plan. We will ask you to make your comments under oath. The comments should be factual or should be your opinion or belief. Please avoid statements such as "all my neighbors," which are unvia- verifiable. This hearing is conducted only to receive your comments. The board will not answer questions nor explain nor debate the comments you make tonight. After all the comments are received, the board planner may make minor corrections to the draft. The planner will bring significant comments to the attention of the board at its meeting on November 14th. At that meeting, the board will discuss each comment and determine whether it should result in further change to the master plan before the plan is adopted. Each member of the public will be limited to three minutes. After everyone has had an opportunity, then I will allow an additional round of comments with a six-minute limit. Please respect these limits in order to give everyone a chance. I suggest you use your time prudently. Do not ask questions. They will not be answered. Do not comment on the format or the conduct of this meeting. Your comments should focus on the draft master plan only. The microphone is now open. And if you want to form a line, that'll make it a little faster.
Before we get started, let me just swear you in. Raise your right hand. Do you swear that any testimony you'll give tonight will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and address for the official record.
Kathy O'Leary-Millington. And I am going to comment, I'm sorry, on the limit of three minutes for a 200-page plan that has been in the works for 10 years. It's outrageous that this plan was not released until 12 days ago and that people were... And these plans were... The conservation plan, which I will make most of my comments on, was written in 2018 and 2019 and was, as far as I know, held in draft since 2020. And I don't see that many changes made to it between then and now. So, let's see. Page 8-1, line number 7, it refers to marches. I believe you meant marshes. Line 8, it refers to the fact that you are systematically analyzing the impact. I saw no systematic analyzation of any of the information in the conservation element. There was actually very little information to analyze in the conservation elements. On line 15, it talks about including, including maintaining... Well, it would be one or the other, including or maintaining. "A natural resource inventory." Apparently, reading further in the document, the last natural resource inventory is from the year 2000. There's a recommendation in this plan to rewrite the national, the natural resource inventory, and apparently that's actually an out-of-date term. Here is the environmental resource inventory from ANJAC. And it says the environmental resource inventory, which is the new term, is an index of natural resources and is a compilation of text, tables, maps, and other visual information about the natural resource characteristics and environmentally significant features of an area. Traditionally called the natural resources inventory, the title environmental resource inventory is now commonly used, reflecting the addition of man-made features to the inventory such as historic sites, brownfields, and contaminated sites. An ERI provides baseline documentation for measuring and evaluating resource protection issues. It is an objective index and description of features and their functions rather than interpretation or recommendation. Identifying significant environmental resources is the first step in their protection and preservation and in assuring that future development or redevelopment protects public health, safety, and welfare. Now, there's another document too, also from ANJAC that refers to this natural resource inventory as being the first step in your master plan and that the land use element should be predicated on an analyzation of the natural resource inventory.
Would you honor the fact that we have a three-minute limit and after everyone's had a chance, you can come back?
Well, this clearly was not done, and I am not even... I am on the first page of a 10-page element, and that's just one of the elements that I have comments on.
I understand.
So, would you explain to me how, in an additional six minutes, I'm supposed to get through my comments? And I have been sticking to your criteria in terms of page number and line number and factual statements.
Thank you.
Further, I have another meeting to go to.
Sir?
Yes, sir.
Do you swear that any testimony you give in front of the board will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you state your name and address for the record?
I'm Fred Hunt from Millington, New Jersey, Heritage Road. I am the chairman of HPAK, the Historic Preservation Advisory Committee, and I'm here to comment on section seven of the draft master plan, which is the historic preservation element. And I'll say first that HPAK generally supports the draft historic preservation element, but there are two changes that we think should be made. The first relates to pages 7.2 and 7.7-3, which is the Historic Preservation Advisory Committee. The draft historic preservation element contains language about HPAK's responsibilities and design standards and quotes HPAK's ordinance 2-35 verbatim. It doesn't really attribute it, but it does have it there. We believe that a simple reference to the ordinance should be sufficient rather than repeating the ordinance itself. Why we believe that because, we say that because the ordinance itself is readily available on the town website. But number two on that is the master plan will be around for a long time, but ordinances change. An example of this relates to HPAK's current ordinance. We expect that in November, the ordinance is going to change. We've asked for a couple of changes to it, and it's supposed to get final approval on November 8th. At that point, the language in the draft master plan as it relates to HPAK is going to be obsolete. Hopefully, you'll update it, but that doesn't mean it can't change again. So that is why we suggest that simply a reference to the ordinance be in here rather than the whole thing. The second change we'd like to make is relates to page 7.1, I believe, or 7-1. The history, the brief history of Long Hill Township. We do not have any problem with anything in the brief history. The only thing we believe is that the historic... That we suggest that the proper place for the brief history is in the introduction to the master plan itself or perhaps in an appendix that is referenced in the introduction. We believe that understanding the past is a necessary component planning for the future of Long Hill Township, not only for the historic preservation element but for the broader scope of the master plan itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next.
Good evening.
May I swear you in? Do you swear any testimony you give in front of the board will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Great. Can you state your name and address for the record?
Sure. Luciana Stansil-Milling from Millington. So, I'm here to just ask for a clarification regarding to page 4.42, item 4.613, recommendation action, recommended action for the conservation area, more specifically for item number five, which specifies a table, 4.7, on page 4.44, where I have a list of properties that will... The current zone is a conservation zone, and it's going to be proposed to conservation line industrial overlay. I just would like to clarify that on page, the figure on 4.8 that you have is not reflecting that information. So, it's just a little confusing. So, like that to, if that can be confirmed, clarified, that all the properties listed at 4.7, which is from the railroad to Madison Avenue, will be included in that table? And does the figure of 4.8 can reflect information? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else have comments on the draft? Come on up.
Do you swear that any testimony you'll give in front of this board will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Name and address for the record, please.
Hamelogians, the Crescent in Millington. A quick statement. As per, and I'm sure you're all familiar with the New Jersey Planning Board Organization and their manual, "Master Plan is not simply a means to justify zoning." Master Plan is a tool to foster safe, decent, and healthy communities. And I looked at that as I read this master plan. Rezoning is mentioned 39 times, and this is my opinion. Rather than making this a 203-page document, all these recommendations for rezoning should have been done at planning board meetings, five of which were canceled so far this year. Didn't have to be a recommendation in the planning board. Moving on to lines and items. The first is on page 1-1, and the line is four. Would be helpful to have the census date included. You refer only to recent census, and the date is 2020. That's a recommended inclusion. On line 25, where you reference the restaurants in the area and say of national chains, I would omit of national chains. We have lots of mom-and-pop restaurants. I think they definitely outnumber the chains, and I could list a whole bunch of them for you. On 1-3, line 24, the verbiage I would change will inevitably to maybe. I don't, I think to say inevitably is way too strong. On line 28, please add "and consistent with the vision of the residents." This is a document supposed to be focused on the residents. So, if you put "uses that are economically attractive to developers," please add "and consistent with the vision of the residents." Speaking of vision of the residents, you have included in the back the survey that was done and not the results. The survey was dismissed as not being reflective or appropriate. How can you put the survey in without the results? I have the results. They are nicely summarized, and you can see what the residents actually said. On 4-... rather, on 1-4, and we're looking at lines 19 and 20. Again, just, I would remove lines 19 to 38 because the master plan is not to justify zoning.
I'm going to have to tell you that your three minutes are up. If you would, please give someone else a chance, and then you can come back when everyone else has had their first chance.
I will do that. I'm on page five of the 86 pages that I was able to review in the 10 days I was given. Some of these comments are really important, and some are just typos. You asked us to give our comments. I think limiting us to such a short period of time after a 10-year wait is totally inappropriate.
Thank you.
Do you swear that any testimony you'll give in front of the board will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Your name and address for the record.
Drew Fettis, Warren Avenue. First of all, thank you guys for everything that you guys do for the town, for the service. I know sometimes it's not, it's a tough job what you're doing, so I appreciate you guys. It's a lot of sacrifice. I think there's just some properties along Union Street and Warren Avenue that weren't, some vacant properties, that maybe you should think about zoning them for light industrial because the DEP won't allow residential homes to be built there, but they will allow light industrial to happen. So, maybe if you just take a look at some of those undeveloped properties.
What section are you discussing specifically?
I don't know. I didn't have it cited. But, you know, on...
I thought we had something in there about Warren Avenue.
Yeah, Warren Avenue and Union Street. There's some vacant properties that are undeveloped.
I thought we had something in there.
I'm sure we did as well, but we'll take note of that.
Yeah, I mean, it's just nice for those property owners that, you know, you can't build a residential house, but, you know, and that area down there is kind of an eclectic area. You know, it does encourage some business, maybe some more tax dollars for you guys and, you know, some hopefully jobs for people too in the neighborhood. So, again, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you swear that any testimony you give in front of this board will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Name and address for the record, please.
Daniel Rogers, and I'm on Elm Street in Sterling. I also wanted to just express my appreciation for all of your service and what you guys are doing here.
Please crowd the microphone.
Sorry.
Or pick it up.
Yep. Okay.
No, no, just slide it out of its...
Like this? I'll slide it out like this way?
Yeah, there you go.
Okay. Gotcha. Is that better?
Yep.
Yeah, so I just wanted to express my appreciation as well for your service and, you know, in all honesty. And I've been a resident for, going on seven years, and I just recently, you know, started participating a lot more in the township and being involved on a couple different committees and realize the regular challenges that, you know, that we face as towns and really probably any town, particularly with the lack of participation from residents probably my age and younger, probably not even really caring. So, that being said, I wanted to ask, because I did read through at least 50% of the master plan that you guys laid out, and this is my first time experiencing it. If you guys, I don't know if this is the appropriate time to comment on it, or maybe you can later, but I would be curious to just hear, you know, your recommendations on, as my generation and younger generations that we're bringing up in this town, you know, we wanting it to make it, we want to make it a great town, and we want it to thrive. And what is it that I can do and other people my age that could be a part of the town so as you guys, you know, finish your retiring years and you decide that you're done?
I'm not that old.
No, you guys are like 40, so it's all good.
My wife might feel differently, but I'm not that old.
No, I'm not saying it in a bad way. I'm just saying, I'm thinking of, if we're talking about the master plan, then we're also talking about next generations to come because we want it to be good for them. So, I would just be curious to hear, you know, your feedback and input in general about what we could do to continue to have good involvement from the town.
Scott, you want to take this one? You want to give him a short answer?
Volunteer.
Okay.
Yeah. We're always looking for folks to...
Doing what you're doing is be active, right?
But I love the point. You probably saw, and I'm eating into your time, but I don't think you care, right?
No, I'm good.
You know, I looked at the population statistics, and since 2009, something like 33% of this town's turned over in terms of households. I moved here in 97, and since then, it's been like 75%. So, it absolutely is, we want participation from the newer people in town, for sure, because we're not going to be here forever.
Right. I think if I could add to that, it's also the vision of what's coming. We know what is coming in our window. We'll need the younger generation to tell us what's on their horizon so we can input that into the land use, right?
Yeah.
That's basically what we're saying here, because this is about land use. But it's about what's on the horizon that we may not be thinking about. We used to think traditionally of brick and mortar, but that's changing over, right? You're not seeing all the stores being populated anymore or more vacancy. So, we need to know what's on the horizon so we can think about that. You see the banks leaving.
Yeah.
So, what are we doing with those properties?
Right.
When's it going to take that place? What is going to be the next econ- or commerce that's coming to town?
Sure.
So, that's what we need.
Okay.
Daniel, thank you. We'll have to move on.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
As it turns out, the master plan can't deal with matters like this, although you have raised a very good question, and I'm sure the mayor would be happy to talk with you offline about this. Send him an email. Anyone else have comments?
Next question, we'll be doing emails. It'll be something totally different.
At this point.
ASB.
Mr. Fast, it's a pleasure to see you.
Hello, everybody. Suppose you have to swear me in?
Yep. Do you swear that any testimony you'll give in front of the board will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Of course, I do.
Thank you.
Larry Fast, 490 Long Hill.
I don't have to tell you to crowd the mic.
No, you don't, but I'm assuming you can hear.
Please do.
Yes. I had hoped this would be more like those township committee long Socratic dialogues, and I have some notes, but I'm just going to make a couple of very brief comments, and hopefully later in the evening, if we do have time for those longer discussions, I can come back on that. So, there were just a few things, as you can imagine. I'm focused on the history and the historic element. But the first thing that jumped out at me was the, in the section one, community profile, the town description, for the first time in my memory of being here 40, 40-something years, no longer includes semi-rural. It's gone just to suburban community. And with the comments in other sections, I have them here cited. I'm not going to read them, but 55% of the town is not developed, and the part that's built up is 95% built up, and some of that are rather large properties. So, we have a lot of land that's very different than the towns that I consider to be suburban. I don't deny that we are suburban, but we still maintain by dictionary definition, and I looked up a few of those, what rural means, and it's connected with or like the countryside. That's in Oxford and Cambridge, like or of the countryside. I think that it still should be in there. We're transmitting a message that we're no different than a Berkeley Heights or a New Providence or East Hanover. Those are suburbs, in my view and experiences planner working. Not that I'm a professional planner, but I've been working as part of the historic planning community for 21 years now in Morris County. So, that's a comment on that. And then that also just brings me to more of a question. I don't know if you'll have the answer, but in the historic element, as many of you know, I had worked on the earlier draft elements going back to 2014 and actually earlier ones as far back as 2002 with outside consultants in historic planning. And one of the strong tools that we have in planning is using historic districting in a very measured and controlled way. It's in a way that doesn't impact on the homeowners but can preserve our scenic and historic byways by putting them in the National Register. There's things that our neighboring towns like Harding and others have done. Tempe Wick Road is one example. We have a lot of historic byways, and again, if we get into a longer discussion, I've pulled... We have a lot of historic byways and again, if we get into a longer discussion, I've pulled, uh, parts of paragraphs from the draft that say that these are aspirational goals here in Long Hill and yet we're not putting any tools in to make those things actually happen. And I think we should go and explore some more of that. Um, the historic element, I actually don't really have too many quibbles with what's in there. It's more what's not in there. So if we can discuss later, I'll be here for a while.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Helena Teelman, Myersville Road.
Let me swear in.
Sure, certainly.
Do you swear that any testimony you'll give in front of this board will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And can you give your name again, please?
Helena, H-E-L-E-N-A, last name Teelman, T-I-E-L-M-A-N-N.
Thank you.
I just have one, um, request. Um, let's see, under the Myersville section, and I know it's also mentioned under the Millington section. They did the declaration of an area in need of rehabilitation pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law. And if you look under that subcode, you know, through the state of New Jersey, um, it's quite intensive. So I'd like to see, um, more information related to it and more details, um, you know, you know, in the plan to better educate the public on what that entails. You know, more detail, um, associated with the rehabilitation of Myersville and/or Millington, that sort of thing. And where the lines are drawn and basically what that involves. So I'd appreciate that attention given to this section.
Do you want it defined?
Yes, more better defined. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Saving the best for last.
Do you swear that any testimony you'll give in front of this board will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
So help me God.
Thank you. Your name and address for the record, please.
Charles Orenowitz, Heritage Road, Millington. First of all, let me thank you for giving me two point three-three seconds to review every page of this document. I have never been so disrespected in this town and I can't believe none of you spoke up to the chairman and said, let the people speak. You all need to look at the mirror. This is ten years and totally unacceptable. I met with a number of you during that ten-year period, said, we're not going to take surveys. They did a survey. We spent dollars on consultants, topology, this, and you give me two point three seconds a page? I read every page. I've got ten pages of comments. So how do you suggest, Mr. Sandow, I convey those?
As quickly and precisely as possible.
Yeah, that's impossible, okay? Even at Bell Labs, you couldn't do that. Opening remarks, major impacts. I believe there are two major impacts on this township that this long-awaited master plan did not emphasize enough or left out. Those two impacts are flooding and storm water management and the second one is affordable housing. Storm water management, no mention of the storm waterman plan from two thousand and seven, sixteen years ago, almost as bad as this thirty years ago. No flood maps, even though we paid our outside consultant to create one, they're not in the documents. No lock coverage maps, no impervious coverage maps. Affordable housing. In your report, you say we have two hundred and thirty-five rental units. But fair share in this, uh, agreement only requires three hundred and sixty. That's an eighty-five percent increase in housing. On a rental basis and you don't want to talk about it? You don't talk about the impacts of that and the next round of density on schools, traffic, services, police fire, totally ignored, totally. Housing element. I'm extremely disappointed you've not, you've deferred all discussions on the housing element, especially after mentioning the housing requirements and sites numerous times in the report. The township filed a midpoint update, a fair share into the court in July twenty-twenty. They filed a status report of housing on June tenth, twenty-twenty-two. There's nothing that you would say that would force another agreement to be decided on December seventeen, December fifteenth, twenty-seventeen. Background studies. There are no background studies that were completed prior to supporting, making any of your recommendations. I'm only on point three. I'll see you later, chief.
Do you swear that any testimony you'll give in front of this board will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Name and address for the record, please.
William Kaufman, Millington. First, I think I just want to compliment the board on a very comprehensive document. It's been a long time coming. We realize that this is, um, one of the nightmare, um, requirements for a volunteer organization and, uh, all through and through it's-
Bill, would you get closer to the mic?
Having, you like to, when someone's saying something nice, you really want it to, to get it on the record. I can, I've noticed the theme here. So, uh, just a couple of quick comments. Um, Millington, that's where I'm going to focus my, um, my comments and it really has to do with statements that I feel in the plan kind of contradict one another. One, four, seven, um, starts to talk about transit villages perhaps becoming obsolete. I have concern over a blanket statement like that without any real planning data, um, and input that would actually indicate that's, uh, factual. All across the state and the country, uh, transit, uh, villages and transit opportunities, uh, tend to, um, are tending to toward more development, not less in those areas. It's in conflict, I think, with four dash two-six or four two, page four twenty-six, section four dot five dot three dot two, where a statement's made that, that the Millington, um, transit asset is an underutilized asset. So I don't think we should be looking toward, uh, describing, um, a declining transit village demand when we have an aging population, um, substantial amount of people who live in Long Hill now are much older. We went from age thirty-four to age forty-four over the last ten years. We have eighteen percent seniors. Um, those people are just not riding the train as much. We also provide no housing in these villages. So what, who's, who's, someone's driving to the train station. If you're going to drive to Millington, you might as well drive to Summit or drive to a local, a closer one. So I think it's minimalist leading to think that if we don't build that, they won't come. The demand is increasing a lot for transit villages over, since the, since the pandemic has been lifted. Um, and I do think, um, that we should take very careful consideration of that asset and not cast them aside and start thinking that perhaps we don't need trains anymore, um, because I do think that's going to continue to trend. I have other comments, but most of the part, by and large, are, they're, uh, um, they're minor, but I just wanted to kind of get on the record and just discuss, uh, make sure that's in front of the board and the committee, um, to consider that the, uh, that the transit villages are a tremendous asset. We are unlike any community really in New Jersey that has three, um, huge opportunities. We are fifty-five percent undeveloped, as someone said earlier. Um, that sounds pretty rural. The rest of us, uh, the rest of the popu- the rest of the area is not undeveloped and we are very much similar, uh, to many of the neighboring communities. So, uh, we do need to consider, growing the population if we want to keep the schools open and, um, other things there. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Bill.
Good evening.
Go ahead.
Do you swear that any testimony you'll give in front of the board will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thanks. Name and address for the record?
Paul White, uh, twenty-five Darty Avenue, Gillette.
Pick up the mic, Paul.
Okay. Two things, I, I noticed you, uh, touched on the warehouse space in town, um, and then there was a comment in there where we're far from the highways and stuff like that. I think that'd be great if we could find the space to actually have warehouses. It's, you know, again, doesn't have kids going into our schools. We got a lot of tax ratables coming in. I think that's great if we could find more, more warehouse space here. Also, I see, uh, in the master plan, the area Homestead Park, uh, Darty Avenue, Gates Avenue, looking to rezone it to R five. I don't know if I could ask for a comment, like, what's the intention of that? Like, why are you going to rezone it? Can I get a comment? Or you just want me to keep going? All right. Okay, I was just wondering, cause it kind of shortened what I was going to get into. Um, I, I guess you're, you're doing it because, uh, like, most people are up here at the mic prior to me, they were talking about, you know, younger people coming in and things like that. Uh, I'm just going to give a quick example. I have a friend of mine on Preston. Uh, he just did a house. First, he was going to knock it down, then he found out if he did put something there, you know, too close to the side lots, um, he'd have to be whatever, thirty or fifty feet back from the street. If he did that, he'd be at the bottom of the lot. Just to make this quick, uh, the south sides of the streets, you know, Preston, Gates, Darty, yeah. And they're narrow. A lot of them are like fifty feet wide. I know, I see-
Microphone.
Oh, a lot of them are, I'm sorry, I thought you were saying the lots are small. I, I was like, I was trying to get to that. That's why I could have sworn you were though. Okay. Um, a lot of the lots are just fifty feet wide. And a lot of people want to do things to their homes in this neighborhood and they, they don't because, you know, no offense, but it's such a nightmare. You got to go for variances. I mean, to help the people out in Homestead Park, it'd be great if you could, you know, really look at it and, uh, like, for instance, Darty Avenue, on the south side of Darty Avenue, there's fifty feet you need for the frontage. I redid my house back in two thousand and what a nightmare it was getting a variance. At the time, you had a building inspector. That drove everybody nuts, but I'm not going to mention her name. But, um, uh, also on Gates and a couple of them, you know, you have these fifty-foot setbacks. I have a neighbor who just wanted to redo his deck and change something. He had to get a variance. He, it, it was just a, a big nightmare. Um, so I mean, if you could change a couple of setbacks or lock coverage seems to be a problem too. A lot of these lots are fifty feet wide in that neighborhood. Again, strange, some of them are a hundred, some of them are a hundred and fifty, and you have some that are fifty. Someone wants to do work to their house, anything. It's like they're already over the lock coverage. Then you got to pay the engineers, dry wells, all this stuff. It just becomes a very big expense. Um, so if you could do something along the lines to help people trying to improve their homes, it'd be great rather than, you know, going through all the red tape. That's it. Uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Wasn't that the intention?
Yeah.
When we discuss this, going to, uh, going to, uh, going to R five, creating R five with the, with the intention of loosening the restrictions to, to, to minimize, uh, variances for small projects? I thought that was the goal.
The, that, that is in the plan. The purpose of, the purpose of rezoning these smaller lots to a smaller zone size like the R five is in order to avoid needing variances for lot coverage. In other words, by giving you a smaller requirement, if it, it matches up with what's actually on the ground right now.
I, I, I get that. Um, and in here it says a hundred feet wide. There's not that many lots in that Homestead area. A lot of them are fifty feet, a lot of them are forty feet. There's some on Long Hill Road. Oh my God, I only think they're forty, thirty feet wide. Um, and then they go out to Gates. There's one property, the guy was trying to build on it for years. He's on Long Hill and he has an empty lot on Gates. I don't even think that's forty feet wide, that lot. He, he couldn't build on that. And the guy who owned it prior to him was a friend of mine. He couldn't build on it because-
Challenge, page four dash eight, lines three, four, five, and six really, right?
I mean, we're not going to solve this here at the mic in three minutes, but I was just hoping you guys could relook it and say, hey, you know, you have a hundred feet wide and the lock coverage is what, twenty-five percent? Again, if you have a fifty-foot lot and the lock coverage is twenty-five percent, you want to put a deck on it. You have to come for a variance. It's just, it's just a headache. You know, people end up doing, forget it.
I'm sorry, I'm going to have to cut this off.
Absolutely. I think I have to. Maybe you could just, uh-
Message received.
Yeah, great, thank you guys.
Thank you. Anyone else with comments on the draft as we've issued it? If there is no one else, then we'll go to the, uh, second round, which is an additional time for anyone who has more comments. And I think there are two people who had excessive comments. Pam and Chuck, is there anyone else besides those two who want to make extended comments? Okay, we'll, uh, is anyone on the board object if we go to ten-minute limit for the second round? You want a five-minute, well, right now or later?
Do you want to do a five-minute break before we go to a ten-minute?
No, we've only been going forty-five minutes. Let's, let's, let's keep on for a while. All right, we'll go to, we'll go to ten minutes for the first person who can get to the microphone. And you're still in the room?
As instructed, I will refer to page-
Hold the mic closer to you, please.
As instructed, I will try to keep to page and line. If I could loosen this, I could, uh, readjust it. All right, that will work. Thank you. In the interest of the restrictions on time, I'm going to jump to chapter four, section four. And if I'm permitted in the future to give comment on others besides section four, I will do that as well. All right, we're on page four dash five and the line is six. Let's see, line six. Consider adding reestablish as a, um, as a recommendation goal, reestablish the flood mitigation committee with a minimum of quarterly meetings. On line eighteen, same page, four dash five, line eighteen. You give the initials of NJPSDDES, but nowhere do you clarify what those initials are. When I looked it up, I saw New Jersey Pollutant Discharge Elimination System. Can you spell it out, please? Because you give the initials, but you don't clarify what they are. On page four dash six, lines five through thirty-seven and four dash seven, lines one through five. We have an established system for changing zoning. And the master plan is not that established system where you go through the planning board and or zoning board. To see it for the first time where you want to rezone areas, um, the residents who are affected by that rezoning need to be notified, need to give their, their comments rather than putting it in a two-hundred-and-three-page document. That's just being resident-focused. Moving to, now this is very minor, but, um, on page four dash fourteen, four dash fourteen, line seven. I believe sunrise is not all just townhouses. I believe there's one-level units. I know that there's discussions to get rid of the condominium, um, statement, but town, it, that, that's a minor issue. On four dash fifteen, you give density for line seven and the whole explanation of the R, um, MF dash four, you give dens- You give density of twelve acres. You do the same for the RAHO redevelopment, lines twenty-six and on. But there's no density given for the MU-O, and specifically Fifty Division Avenue in Millington. To be consistent, include density. You have density in one, you have density in the third, you don't have density in the middle one. Again, clarification of need of rehabilitation. When looking through, as you know, for three years, I sat on the master plan committee. And rehabilitation in the draft that we presented in December of 2020, the word rehabilitation was used once. In this draft, it appears twenty-two times. For the first time, people are seeing this. We don't understand it. You need to clarify it. That's for the residents. On your figure four dash eight, under Millington, item number seven. Which is... Let's see, I have to count down the bullets. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Allow medium-density multifamily to serve as a transition area. In this, it's explained further on, the transition area being between the Cooper Lane condominiums and the Tifa site plans for a hundred and forty units, going from low-density to high-density. You wanna put in a medium-density, but ignore the fact that you will still have two single-family homes in that, quote, "transition" area. I fail to see the need for a transition area when you're still gonna have single-family homes. And recommend that that be put on a back burner. There's reference on four dash twenty, line eleven, for architectural design standards. Can you please provide where those are? My search, I can only find the ordinance for design standards. I know there was a lot of talk about developing architectural design standards. To the best of my knowledge, they don't exist yet. And it's, that comes up several times in cohesiveness of the architectural design in the villages. The... All right, now, we're on page four dash twenty-five, line fourteen. This is the vision for Millington Village, maintaining enhanced, et cetera, et cetera. Line fourteen, I respectfully request that you add, while respecting the desire of the residents to maintain a small-scale feel. This is what was in the survey that's provided, but not, the results were not shared. Steep slopes, there's a lot about steep slopes in Millington Village. I can't imagine why we would want to do anything with those steep slopes. And I recommend that the references in steep slope, which is four dash twenty-six, lines twenty through twenty-three. There's a very simple solution. Don't do anything with the steep slopes. They're not deteriorating. I know there was a plan that was floated to put in parking lot and such, and that would mean addressing the steep slopes. Get rid of it, lines twenty to twenty-three. Also, on this page, lines, or on R26, lines four dash five, I just caution you to not overemphasize, or to overestimate the feet on the street. That's the wording used here, when you expect the impact on Millington Village businesses, using the example of Sterling Manor, and the impact that that had on Main Avenue, which, to my recollection, is not, was not really a big deal. This, I think, is important on R26, lines fifteen through eighteen. The rezoning of the office zone in Millington, the Barrett Roofing Site. Again, a buffer zone, a transition zone. I feel this, and this came up before committee, so it was surprising to me to see this in here. This is premature. We need to assess the impact of the high-density Tifa development before we add additional density to that street. We don't know the impact in circulation. We, the site plans looked at circulation only at the corner at Stone Hill. We need to see what happens at Tifa, and the impact that's gonna have on Division Avenue and Valley, and Division Avenue and Long Hill, before we say we wanna put in more density on one street.
Pam, can you just remind me what reference you're looking at? What's line?
Yes, this is page four dash twenty-six, and it's lines fifteen through eighteen. And this pertains to rezoning the office zone in Millington. And my recommendation would be to rezone it to what it is. I agree, it's not an office zone. That is a misnomer for the zoning for that. It's light industrial. Zone it to light industrial. If you're gonna rezone, rezone to what it is. And then let's see the impact of Tifa before we start making plans for additional medium-density on a road that we don't know the impact of the high-density that's already been site-approved. Again, on page four dash twenty-nine, line number four. And this is point A. There's, I'm sorry, on line four. Expand the township's architectural design or appearance ordinance. This is my recommendation. Currently, I only know of the ordinance, which is LU-135. It doesn't include anything about a visually cohesive business and village area. Architecturally, visually cohesive. Again.
I'm gonna ask you if you can wrap up very quickly and give someone else a chance.
Okay. Provide me with the architectural design standards, please. Reference some here. Add the comments from the residents. And in all the areas where you talk about the Tifa site remediation, please include what was discussed and agreed upon. Maybe it was just a handshake, that there would be an impartial monitor of the remediation to protect the citizens in that area. Specifically, a, an independent LSRP for the remediation of those sites. There's nothing in there. Again, I'm looking at the health and the welfare of the residents of this township, and I don't see that emphasized here.
Thank you.
Do you swear affirm that any testimony you'll give in front of this board will be the whole truth and nothing but true?
I do.
Thank you.
John Petrica, Sterling, New Jersey. Good evening. Thank you, Tim.
Would you give us your last name again, please?
John Petrica, P-E-T-R-I-C-H-A. Thanks to the members of the master plan committee for doing all this work.
Could you please get closer to the microphone?
Sure, absolutely.
We'd, just pick it up and hold it close to you.
So, one of the goals listed in this master plan.
Or bend it, or something. I'm sorry, it's not as sensitive.
No worries.
You can bend it, just a little force.
Is that good? Thanks. All right, one of the goals listed in this master plan is to, quote, "make the township more pedestrian and bicycle-friendly," unquote. And that's goal two-point-two, point-three, circulation goal two. Recently, approximately ten local residents spoke out against the opening of Delaware Avenue between Skyview Terrace and Morristown Road. This opening appears to be noted on the prior master plan. The concerned residents spoke about how the street opening will result in increased traffic along Delaware and will decrease their safety as they go for a walk, take their dogs out, or while their children ride their bikes on the street. The neighborhood residents spoke out about how the opening, how the street opening will make the neighborhood less pedestrian and bicycle-friendly, which is in opposition to this master plan. One of the two reasons for opening Delaware was to comply with the master plan, which was originally written many years ago and approved by taxpayers, who may no longer even live in this town. Based upon the outcry two weeks ago, it appears that current taxpayers want Delaware to remain closed. Their opinions should be strongly considered in the review and approval of this new master plan. Another reason for opening Delaware involved emergency access, as discussed by someone that I believe does not live in the immediate neighborhood. This access is something that I understand has not been an issue in at least thirty-plus years. If this is truly an issue, then this board must consider similar openings in this master plan for many streets in this town that dead-end and cul-de-sac, as they would have similar emergency issues. Otherwise, the township may open itself up to legal liability, and the Delaware opening will not appear to be fair. There's a section of this master plan called "street vacations," and I think that's section six-point-six, that involves paper streets, which are areas owned by the municipality, but have never been approved and exist only on municipal tax map. The part of Delaware Avenue to be opened is possibly one such paper street. This master plan states that, quote, "it is often advantageous for the municipality to vacate by ordinance. That portion of the paper street no longer required. Upon vacation, a portion of a vacated right-of-way abutting private property is merged with that property to the benefit of the municipal tax rolls." And again, that's section six-point-six. This may be a good use of that area, if possible. I ask that this master plan committee consider the wishes of current taxpayers who live in the immediate neighborhood and not open Delaware, but let a dead-end, or a cul-de-sac, or even have an emergency vehicle bypass. Any one of these options should help protect the current residents that are concerned about their safety and their children's safety, and help comply with one of the key goals of this master plan, to make the township more pedestrian and bicycle-friendly. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else want to take the second round of ten minutes? Come on up. Last chance before I declare the hearing closed.
Mr. Chairman, if I don't make it in ten minutes, I got eight pages in front of me. What do you suggest I do?
I'll let you go until nine o'clock, and we're gonna take a break.
Okay. Let's see how it goes.
But, but, you've gotta, you've gotta manage your time to be done by that time.
I'm gonna try.
Okay.
Thank you for your thoughtfulness. Point four on my opening comments. Thoroughness of your review. There was a major lack of thoroughness in editing this document prior to releasing the draft to the public. For example, typos, referencing a 2022 master plan several times. Mentioning recycling plastic bags. We've outlawed those in this state. Gillette is the gateway to the Great Swamp. I guess I have the wrong map. The history of the town appears multiple times in this two-hundred-and-three-page document, and I read every page. Point four. A number of separate elements were included into the land-use element that should have been documented as separate standalone elements, namely, villages. Millington, Sterling, Gillette, and the Myersville Hamlet. Point six. Zone changes. All the zone changes in this draft should have been handled in open, public discussions at planning board meetings outside this draft. These zone changes are your responsibility on an ongoing basis. You canceled a number of planning board meetings. You could've brought these up then, rather than stuff them in here. Expectations. Maybe, just maybe. After waiting ten years, my expectations for this master plan were too high. After using this manual, the New Jersey Municipal Master Plan Manual, as my guide, the experts in this state generated this. So, why don't this group rewrite this? Apparently, you've attempted to do that. Now, my detailed comments are by chapter. Now, Mr. Chairman, I didn't identify every line item, but I got most of them. Chapter one. Most, if not all, chapter one could be eliminated. Consider placing all history of the township in one location of the master plan. If you decide to keep chapter one, one land-use area that needs to be included is affordable housing. It's had major impacts on apartment condo units in terms of densities per acre, building height, number of stories, and the subsequent impact on schools, traffic, services, including police, fire, and rescue. Next, if you decide to keep chapter one, there are no overall goals and objectives beyond the element level. Page one-point-three, and if you have it numerical, it's page eight. Developed properties will inevitably be higher-density housing. It's not necessarily the case. If Long Hill Township adopts the approach like some towns, like the town I grew up in, in Randolph, they have dedicated, dedicated affordable housing units, working with Habitat for Humanity. Long Hill Township needs to begin dedicated affordable housing units, not higher densities. Chapter two, page two-point-two. What is the natural capacity of the land in terms of units per acre? I have no idea what that is. Page two-point-two, page sixteen, goal three. What is the appropriate scale and density with established residential neighborhoods? Is the Presti property designated with a hundred units appropriate scale and density for the established neighborhood of Laurel Drive? I don't think so. I would like to add that this group, some of you, they were on the board in 2017. Mr. File was, Mr. Hands was. I don't think Dennis was. I think Mr. Jones was.
Or was not.
You met in private session, and you picked the initial affordable housing sites. And then you forwarded it to the township committee, and they picked, based on your recommendations. No public comment. So, I ask you. Does Laurel Drive compatible with the hundred units you're gonna build on the... on the LePresty property? I think not. Page 2.2, open space. Should the goal be land acquisition with open space dollars and significantly reduce or eliminate other open space dollar expending? When I voted for open space when it was on the referendum in this state, I thought it was for land acquisition. Page 2.3, goal two, recreation. Given the Long Hill Township aging trend addressed in Appendix A, there should be a goal to meet the needs of the aging population that's grown at 18% and higher. Page 2.4, page 18, objective four, reduce wastewater management treatment costs. We don't own it. We don't control it. Why would you put that in there? I'd love to hear a response on that one. Chapter three, page 3.3. The Long Hill Township Committee voted not to support the funding for the flood wall because the township was split on what to do with the flood wall. Page 3.3. Where are the flood wall maps to show the flood hazard expansion? I read the invoices from our planner. We paid for updating the flood wall map. Where is it? Page 3.5, line one. Please note that Superior Court Judge Michael Hubner, on December 15, 2017, he's the guy that the judge approved the settlement agreement between Fair House Housing, Fair Share Housing and Long Hill Township. We didn't have that until the judge approved it. Let's correct it. Page 3.5, page 25, the Tiffa site. There's no mention of the building height, number of stories, and densities unit per acre. I believe the final design of the 140 units has yes been, has yet to be approved. It's my understanding that the subcommittee of the Township Planning Board was to meet with the applicant. I don't believe that's done yet. So don't say it's done and approved. I might add, all references to these affordable housing sites in this draft document be consistent. Let's mention building height, number of units, density per acre, and I like to see units by number of bedrooms, and the number of stories. You selectively put in, oh, it's two and a half stories, 35 feet, when you want to get it changed. But we've got a building here at Gillette's office that's 59 feet, one inch. Again, page 3.5, Gillette, you don't mention that. Page 3.6, page 26, there's a demand for drive-through windows. There's no discussion in the draft document how the drive-through windows conflict with the goal of making the township more walkable. If we're going to have restaurants that have drive-throughs, do you think you're going to create a walkable community on Valley Road? That one's got me. If at any point in this document you want to increase drive-throughs, but then you want to increase walkability, doesn't make sense. If you could explain that, I'd love to hear it. Page 4.1, line eight. Where are the Long Hill Township overarching planning goals? I couldn't find them. Page 4.4, page 34, flooding. Where is the background studies and analysis of planning board and Board of Adjustment variance approved for lock coverage in the appropriate maps? Such analysis, you might conclude that you need stricter regulations on lock coverage because of the flooding and mitigation of stormwater management. Not there. Page 4.4, recommendations. What progress have we made in buying properties in the flood zones? We bought seven houses 10, 15 years ago. Nothing's happened. Have we moved, have we moved any abandoned properties in flood plain? Have we de-snagged the river? There's no updates. There's been no progress there, but at least put it in there. No progress. As I mentioned before, we paid for a flood map. It's not there. Page 4.5, line 21. Where is the recommendation to update the storm wind, stormwater management plan that was prepared in 2007? I need to get a drink of water. That's 16 years ago. Where's the recommendation? Again, on page 4.6, walkability in the mixed-use residential and commercial neighborhoods is not by having drive-throughs. Page 4.7, page 37, line 11 to 13. Who takes the liability of the EV charging stations on municipal-owned parking lots? With all the fires, I wouldn't touch that one. Page 4-15. Please identify, as I said before, building height, number of stories, and density in unit per acre for all zones. Again, on page 4.15, the Tiffa site has not yet gone through the Planning Board Subcommittee. Page 4-16, line 26. I recommend that we start dedicated affordable housing. Page 12, now, I'm sorry, number 12, page 417, area a need rehabilitation. That is so vague, I don't know what we're asking for. You're going to confuse the contract, you're going to confuse the business with the property owner. These, then we're going to give tax abatements. As you're aware, our first pilot just failed, just failed. But now we're going to give new tax abatements, and no general categories of what the property owner can do in this area of rehabilitation. You're leaving too much open to interpretation. Page 417. Update the sign ordinance. Take a ride through Mendham. You go out to Dunkin' Donuts, you can't even realize that their sign is there because it so well blends in with the building. I drove past their car dealership, and I thought it was a house. Take a look around. Page 4-20. First mention of building height is 35 feet, two stories, two and a half stories, when you want to push your agenda. Page 34, let's see, uh, page, let's see, 3, 3-23. The rehabilitation design plan for Valley Road, is it required or encouraged? Page 4-24, we're going to prevent flooding by building higher. That's new. Page 4.24, we're going to encourage sidewalks instead of requiring sidewalks for a walkable community downtown. Does that make any sense at all? Page 4-25. For those that haven't been here a while, pocket parks went out the window when residents in this town went up in arms 20-plus years ago. Take it out. Page 4-25, Millington has no flooding, but we've got asbestos. Page 4-26, line 26, uh, line 16 and 17. There's no background studies of what low, medium, and high density means, and what their impact is on schools, traffic, and services, including fire, rescue, and police. Low, medium, and high density. What is it? Page 4-47, Sterling Village should be a standalone, separate element. Same with Myersville Hamlet and Gillette Village. And on page 4-33, no mention that Gillette has the highest-approved building in the town at 59 feet, one inch. This is a good one. Page 4-33, this is the rush you went through. 4 dash, page 4-33, page 63. In figure 4-8, page 49, Gillette is shown as an area for rehabilitation. Guess what? In the write-up, the area is completely left out in the recommended section. Why do I have to read that and point that out? Do you think that's a thorough job? I don't. Page 4-40. What is the maximum permitted density and the maximum permitted square footages of units in the analysis and discussion? There isn't any. Page dash, 4-47, we're going to talk about redevelopment zones. You don't mention they failed. Two-approved redevelopment zones, thermoplastics, and the former car wash, even with a pilot, have failed. The Valley Road redevelopment failed because it couldn't even meet the criteria for redevelopment. But we don't mention that. Page 4-48. Did the approvals of the Tiffa and Gillette office sites, quote, "contribute to the ratable base of the township and ensure that development does not negatively affect Township or Board of Education budgetary finances"? I'd love to have an answer to that. Page 4-54, lines 31 to 35. There's no mention of the Police Department building flooding and the fact that the MR report to the Township Committee recommended the police be relocated. Is the master plan going to recommend moving the police headquarters? Page 5-9, chapter five, page 5-9, please add a recommended action to restrict open space spending to land acquisition. Page 5-13. Did we check with Bernis Township if they could meet our swimming pool demand? Page 5-18. Pickleball courts are not even mentioned in the discussion. Tomorrow night, we're approving $22, $223,000 for pickleball courts. It's not even mentioned. Page 6-7. Please add a recommended action to reduce the number of signs in Long Hill Township and clearly reduce the number of signs on Valley Road. Mr. Sandow, you and I counted signs from the Passaic River to the Shoprite several years ago, and the numbers were phenomenal. Page, chapter eight, page 8.2. Please mention the two contaminated sites in Myersville are nowhere found in this draft. The guide I read here says you've got to be open and honest with the public. Don't hide that we've got two contaminated sites in Myersville, asbestos. Page 8.6, lines 11 to 15. If you disturb asbestos at the various locations in this township, there will be air quality problems. Page 8.7, lines 33 to 35. This one's really confusing. The recommendation on the use of fertilizers and pesticides. If you could explain those lines, 33 to 35, I'd love to hear them. Chapter nine, page 9 dash 3. I said this in the opening remarks, retail, plastic bags are long, no longer permitted in New Jersey. Therefore, I don't believe we're recycling them. There's also no mention of our greatest, one of our good accomplishments, recycling, styrofoam. Not there. Again, page 9-10, line 17 to 19. Who has the liability for the EV charging station on municipal property? I wouldn't touch that. Page 11 dash 1, line 6 and line 15. Long Hill Township doesn't have a 2022 master plan. Page 11.2, line 10. Long Hill Township doesn't have a 2022 master plan. Appendix B, page 1. According to the draft master plan, does Long Hill Township have four or five communities? Is Homestead Park in or out as a community? It's misleading. Page 1 of Appendix B. Gillette is not a visitor's gateway to the Great Swamp National Wildlife Refuge. I appreciate your time and allowing me to speak all my points tonight. And I do appreciate the time and effort everyone put in. And believe me, I read the 203 pages. And like I said, I expected more. But if you can correct these issues and diligently do your homework and do all the necessary background studies and get this done, I'm 110% behind you. Thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Arundel-Witson. Thank you for meeting the deadline of nine o'clock. Does anyone else have any comments you'd like to put into the record tonight? Otherwise... No hands? All right, I'm going to close the hearing. Come on, Larry.
Do it now. Yeah.
Let's have a break.
Do it now. I think we're close to not needing a break.
You don't have to swim back in.
Yep, you're good.
Good. Anyway, Larry Fast, Long Hill Road back again. And this is just expanding a little bit on what my, not many pages of notes, and the print is very big here. Actually, my sight isn't good enough, so I'm going to read a couple of points that were in here. I'd already just brought up my comment about missing the semi-rural, and I really think it should go back in, not at the expense of any of the other descriptions in the intro that are already in there. But I, I think it does distinguish why this town is different from the typical suburb.
Use the mic, please.
Thought it was there, but let's...
What color is the light?
It's green.
Yeah, it's green.
It is green.
I wonder if the polar pattern has been changed on this.
These are directional mics, so you have to speak directly into the mic.
Yep, I'm familiar, but the pattern can be changed on this one, and I don't know if it's been changed since I ordered it. So, at any rate, if you can hear me now... So, um, at any rate, if you can hear me now. So, uh, a couple of the other things. Let's see where we, I pulled myself a little too far ahead here. So if we dump, uh, finish discussing the, the rural, the, um, town in section one-two says the town is visually shaped by the, um, survival of early settlement, pattern of roads and alignments that make up its historic neighborhoods and streetscapes. In section two, under visions and goals, it, uh, brings up in two, two, two dot, two dot four, to promote the history of the township and preserve its remaining historic resources. And then in two dot, two dot six, under conservation, it says, preserve scenic value of the towns, township's natural resources, including its open space area and areas and treed corridors. So it seems there is a very definite theme that's emerged there. And that logically brings us over to the historic preservation element, because that's where those kinds of things should be found, uh, the preservation. Right in the introduction of the historic preservation element in seven dot two, it says, Long Hill is still visually shaped by the survival, survival of early settlement pattern and road alignments making up the historic neighborhoods and streetscapes. Uh, the patterns represent a historical identity that can be recognized and understood. So, um, it's good, 'cause you're operating, and it's actually cites, and very pleased to see that, the National Historic Preservation Act, uh, the NHPA of nineteen-sixty-six, and there's a whole long list of what its, uh, federal numbers are, as well as the New Jersey State Historic Preservation Office, which that kind of act, operates as a field office for the Department of the Interior, Interior and the Secretary of State's standards on the National Register. But in the element, there are no historic districts recommended as overlays or as standalones, with the exception of the partially-approved Sterling Workers District, which has been languishing for twenty-three years. It's got a certificate of eligibility, but it's never moved forward into a real district. Um, I, before I go on, I, I wanna give a little bit of credence to my background. I am the chairman of the Morris County Historic Preservation Trust Fund. I've been that chairman for ten years, and I've been on the trust fund in, either as a member or in other positions for twenty-one years now. And we, uh, operate in all thirty-nine towns, providing grants for a number of historic preservation projects. So I've got a little background in this. I was also the, uh, one of the founding members.
Larry, would you please, would you please focus on commenting on the master plan?
Sure. I just wanna give a little credibility of why I'm, I'm bringing some of this up, which is, in the element, I'm not seeing any historic districts recommended, and it's one of these powerful planning tools, and I see it around the county in our applicant towns. And we actually fund historic plans that do, um, districting or other, uh, studies in order to create useful tools that, um, can lay out things like the historic byways that I mentioned earlier and the historic districts. They perform an underlying backbone to the look and feel of our community, um, and, but just putting them in as aspirational goals doesn't necessarily achieve anything. It's a way local government can leverage the power of federal and state protection to protect itself, uh, and give a fighting chance against higher levels of governments or authorities, utilities, and single-minded developers. The approach brings some practical means to the aspirational wishes. So let me give you a few examples. I had mentioned in Harding, Tempe Wick Road, which is protected under the National Register and State Register designations. The viewshed and the, the feel, that kind of amorphous thing when you're in a place, a sense of place, of the district is protected. Homeowners on that road have no restrictions applied to their properties. The historic environment in which they chose to buy a home is protected, though. There are numerous similar, similarly protected byways around historic Morris County. Long Hill should avail itself of such a resource, uh, for several of its roads, already cited by previously contracted historic planning experts that we had for earlier versions of the master plan. And that would include roads like Long Hill Road, White Bridge Road, Mountain Avenue, Carlton, Pleasant Plains, and others of the historic fabric of the town. Next would be historic districts. Contrary to widely circulated misinformation, historic districts are not an imposition on the property owners in a district unless specifically controlling local ordinance have been passed by the township committee, which we don't have in this town. The federal and state historic dis, uh, districts provide protection against intrusions on our familiar streetscapes, again, by higher levels of government. That would be county up to state or federally and state-regulated utilities. Private ownership is not affected. If you have a National Register house and you wanna bulldoze it, you can do that. There is no federal or state law that's gonna stand in the way. The only thing that would stand in the way is if there is a local ordinance saying that, and in this town, we don't have that. Other towns do, but we don't. So, uh, for instance, uh, we've had some intrusions in our viewscape around here. For instance, Myersville Circle has been proposed for historic districting in many of the previous master plan proposals. Several other areas of the town have also been similarly identified. If Myersville District had been implemented, we might have been afforded some protection from the new hundred-and-eighty-foot, uh, high cell tower that looms over the district. Well, the proposed district. And possibly there might have been some federal-on-federal protections regarding even the PSENG power pylons if we had, um, our districts on the ground, which we don't. In the case of the cell installation, citing is governed by the National Environmental Policy Act, or NEPA, a provision which provides, and I'm quoting from the FCC's, uh, uh, own document citing NEPA, um, any site that might affect properties included or eligible for inclusion in the National Register of Historic Places or Indian Religious and Cultural Sites could have been excluded. It comes from the FCC's document. If Myersville, Myersville had already been on the National Register, the township could have triggered federal projects with a one-oh-six review by filing FCC Form six-twenty or six-twenty-one. And as far as I'm aware of, none of that was ever done when the plans were proposed in the town. And then maybe two smaller or less intrusive towers could have been constructed, something to give the same FCC coverage, but, uh, probably costing the carriers a little more, but, so that we wouldn't be looking at, um, a looming tower in Long Hill coming out of Great Swamp. So the historic element, as it's currently structured, is ignoring taking advantage of planning tools available to us. Other towns in the county, uh, are pre-positioning themselves to protect themselves and keep their planning local. This year, um, the Morris County Historic Preservation Trust Fund awarded a grant to Booton Town for their Main Street Historic District Study. They're doing that planning study in order to preserve what they have. That's a different kind of Main Street that we have, although in some ways, not all that dissimilar to Sterling. A similar grant is, uh, was funded, um, a few years ago for Mendham Borough, and many other Morris towns do the same, from Harding to Mountain Lakes. So why not Long Hill? I don't hear too much about restrictions. One other last point, and then I'm gonna wrap up, is that, um, in the historic element for, um, historic planning, I don't see any requirement for an expert qualified under CFR thirty-six, part sixty-one, a federal set of knowledge and performance qualification, qualifications for specialists in the field, which is embodied under the National Park Service within the Department of the Interior. Qualified guidance is really important for making, uh, to avoid making decisions that may not conform to preservation requirements or miss important considerations. The Planning Board has access to such a qualified individual and a planner. But in the past, those qualifications were actually required to be included in membership of the H-PAC as well, and I think it'd be wise to include that. And that's all I got to say on that. I'm gonna let everybody else talk about other elements.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Are there any other hands?
I've lost track of what I've brought up and what I haven't.
Would you, uh...
So I'm gonna make it real brief.
Okay.
Give me two minutes, Dennis.
Okay, okay. I just wanna know if we should schedule a break before you start, but if you only want two minutes, you go ahead.
Thanks. We have a beautification committee, correct?
Second?
We have a beautification committee. There's no mention of the beautification committee, what they're doing, what's, what's their goals, um, and such. And I would encourage wherever the word investment or development or developer is, um, mentioned that we also take the residents' safety and healthy and health into consideration with a statement such as, "while fostering a safe and healthy community for any development, especially in areas that were, um, even though they've been delist, delisted, if they're still listed or delisted." Thank you.
Thank you. Any other hands? Do you wanna, you wanna take a shot? Come on up. Uh, we were, we'd like to either take a break or adjourn, and so you tell us whether you're gonna be too long or not.
I'm gonna be a while, so I suggest you take your break if, if I'm the next person.
Okay, let's take a, let's take a, uh, seven-minute break. Okay, the planning, the planning board is back in order at nine twenty. Come on, Kathy.
Do I need to be sworn in again?
Nope, you remain sworn.
Okay. Kathy O'Leary-Millington. All right, so I think I was on the first page of the conservation plan elements, and I think I had just finished mentioning the natural resource inventory, which is the updated term for it, which according to this document has not been updated since 2000, even though the recommendations of ANJAC are that the natural resource inventory come first before the conservation plan and that the land use element follow both of those Is there any reason why that wasn't done or is it in process? And who's, who's responsible for that? Okay, we're not answering my questions, but we're answering other people's questions?
I think you asked general questions, maybe I meditate.
People, I know you've been answering questions of people.
I have specifics.
You've been asking questions, answering questions of other people.
We're, we're, we're accepting comments on the draft master plan. This is, this is not a question and answer session, and we're not going to get into debates.
But you were, you were asking question, you were, you were answering other people's questions, I'm just, so that's, that's only a rule when you say it's a rule? So it's not really a rule? Thank you. So, let's see. So the line 21, Long Hill has faced and continues to face a variety of complex conservation and environmental challenges. You mentioned the jet port and the Passaic River flood wall. The flood wall, however, is not a complex challenge, challenge to the township. This is a solution to a complex challenge, and that complex challenge is flooding, which is not described in any, any depth anywhere in the document. I can get a better description of the flooding in the township by taking a look at the page for the Millington flood gauge than I've gotten from the master plan from our township, which explains at which point in the river, the level in the river, what parts of town will flood. None of that is referenced here. The fact that we have a flood gauge, I don't think is referenced in this document anywhere. I move on to page eight dash two. Again, it talks about the, the flood wall, and it mentions the neighboring towns objections, but did not, does not say what those objections were. It doesn't mention the potential for flooding downstream or across the river. It is a very slanted description towards the building of the flood wall, which is not what this document is supposed to be about. Environmental contamination on line number six, or starting on line number six and going to line number eight, was moved to the land use element for some untold reason. Again, I point to the two ANJAC documents to say that, that this is the proper place to discuss environmental contamination. We have a number of sites in town. We have a Superfund site. Even though it has been delisted, that does not mean that there is no contamination at that site. I think at least one of your members is familiar with this report because his company wrote it. And this is the report for the Tifa site. The little bit that is discussed of the Tifa site in this document is in the land use element, and it's described as an opportunity. The only contamination that is discussed is asbestos, and there is a suggestion that this asbestos is limited to the, the capped area of the site. That is not what this report says. It also, further, it says that there is more than asbestos at that site and that there are, let me see. There are eight, I believe. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, yes, eight areas of concern that still need to be investigated. You want to comment?
No.
Okay. It looked like you were getting ready to speak.
I'm listening. Thank you.
Okay. So those areas of concern include a former fuel oil UST, an above-ground storage tank, a former gas pump and suspected underground storage tank, former tanks in the area of building two, a former oil pit area, a discharge area of a former sluiceway, a former rail line and equipment testing area, and concrete. I don't know what the status is of those investigations. I would assume that since there's been no activity at the site and that is filled with tenants now, that there, that this process has been stalled, but I don't know. Further, there is more than one contaminated site associated with the Superfund site known as the Millington Asbestos Dump. There is much more information on both the EPA website, and we have an entire bookshelf at the library dedicated to this site, yet we won't even mention it in the conservation And the other two sites, one is in the, one is in the swamp, and one is on White Bridge Road, which is actually recently the subject of another land use issue in town, which no one on the township committee, though they were ruling, they were ready to rule that it was okay to put a, to build berms and other structures there. No one seemed to know that that was also part of the Superfund site, or at least adjacent to a, an area with operational and engineering, engineering controls in place to make sure that the contamination that was at that site did not migrate anywhere. Line number nine, stormwater management is of critical importance. I would agree. However, it, and line number 12 and 13, it manages an element, a sub, a sub-element that is dedicated to stormwater management. That element does not exist. It was removed. Some of it apparently was placed into the land use element, again, for some unknown reason. But however, there is no map of stormwater infrastructure, and though we talked about the flood wall, and I previously said that flooding is actually the complex challenge that faces the township, and I would say environmental contamination is a complex challenge that faces the township, there is no flood map contained anywhere in this document. Under existing conditions, eight dot two, line number 25, the Black Brook is actually a C1 waterway when it runs through the National Wildlife Refuge. There are portions of the Black Brook also that would impacted that development or that, those berms that I was referring to that came before the township committee. If perhaps that was in the master plan, it would give, would have given the township committee something to refer to when they were making what seemed like, to many residents, a hasty decision. But they required a, a property owner to hire an attorney who then interpreted that for them. Let's see what else. So page eight dot, eight dash three, line number 23, it talks about protection of groundwater resources. Nowhere in this document does it mention that people in town have wells as a source of their drinking water. There are a number of wells in town. I don't know how many at this point, but there was, I believe in 2001, a wellhead protection program and documentation of the wellheads in town that were, that is actually available through the Rutgers Library, which I don't know that anyone has searched. There are a number of documents relating to Long Hill on that library, and I have provided that link to members of this board and to members of the township committee in the So we should have an updated version of that resource. We should know where the wells are in town, and we should be mapping that, and we should be making sure that future development does not impact the drinking water of the residents of our township. It also on, in line number 24, it talks about where surface water can infiltrate more permeable soil. There is no, again, there is no map of recharge, sensitive recharge areas. There is no map of impervious surface. There is no map of soils. These are all suggested in the ANJAC documents, and they are also available fairly easily. I've actually produced a number of them through NJMAP2.com, which is a project of Rowan University. The DEP also has resources that you can generate maps for free with very little training. So there is actually absolutely no reason why there are no maps in this conservation element, and there are pitifully few maps in this entire document. Let's see. Okay, 26 mentions wetlands. Again, there's no map of wetlands. 27 buffers between impervious development and surface water bodies. There is a map layer of impervious development. There is a map for surface water bodies. We don't have either of those. We can, we should also have a map of the, the C1 waterways. It actually, a C1 waterway also runs very close to the Myersville Fields. So any future development at Myersville Field, we may want to consider whether or not it impacts the stream buffer for that C1 stream. Yes. So again, on 20, being on 27 and going to 28, it mentions tree canopy cover. Yet again, we have no idea what our tree canopy cover is. We have no idea what the change is in our tree canopy cover over time. This is quantifiable, and this data is available through the sources that I have already quoted. If that is a goal of ours, and we are going to map, and we are going to, if that is a real goal of ours, to maintain tree canopy cover, then we should know what the baseline is that we're starting from. We should also be looking at something called Vermule Maps. Vermule Maps are from the 1870s. They were a comprehensive map of the entire state of New Jersey, and it shows where there was, where there was forest cover in the 1830s through the 1870s, I believe. What that tells us is where the highest conservation value places in our town are in terms of forested areas. So these are things that we should be looking at that we are not. And considering that we had 10 years to write this, and as I said before, we began to write this in 2000, this particular element in 2018, and left it on the shelf until 20, from, since 2020 until now, there's absolutely no reason to not have these resources included here. Page eight dash four. Let's see. Line number six, it talks about the replacing native vegetation. I believe you meant the replacing of native vegetation. And it says with turf grass. And actually, it's really closely mown turf grass that is particularly of, of concern as opposed to simply turf grass that's allowed to grow to height. To create views of the river, I don't know that we can know why people are mowing. Some of it is just a social convention as to why people are mowing their grass to that height, so that should probably be taken out. Line number 11, it claims that the township has purchased flood-prone properties. I do not believe that we are currently doing that, and I don't know that we've done that in 10 years. But it would be good to have an idea of when the last time we purchased flood-prone properties was and understand why we are not doing it currently, because the Blue Acres funding is still available. In, in line 12, it mentions the proactive work to address flood hazards. I do not know what that is referring to. Again, we have not been purchasing properties through Blue Acres. We do not have an updated stormwater management plan. Our stormwater management plan is from 2007. So I don't know how we are actively working to address flood hazards if our stormwater management plan is from 2007. The only map I was able to find of our stormwater infrastructure was a map of where the storm drains were. There was no map of where the storm drains flow to. And as I understand, the township recently was cited by the EPA for being in violation of the Clean Water Act, and it was multiple violations, including not having an updated stormwater management plan. Let's see. Line number 14, wetlands form a critical, critical landscape. I agree, yet there is no wetlands map. Line number 19, it talks about the township hosts a number of vernal pools. Vernal pools are something that are available through the mapping sites that I referred to. Again, we have a whole now eight point two point five, beginning at line 20, is a whole discussion of woodlands. Here would be a very good place to discuss the Vermule Maps. Line number 28, it says that the greatest threat to the woodlands is that of invasive plant species, but makes no mention of the invasive insect species that are devastating, particularly the ash trees that make up a large percentage of the, the trees in our township because we have so many wetlands and the ash trees thrive in that type of environment and can tolerate our clay soil. And the other thing is that the really, probably the greatest threat to our woodlands is actually development, not any other natural, natural predator or pest. On line 32, it talks about the old-growth trees. Old growth, actually 31, it talks about old-growth trees, and I have to say, old-growth trees, it would be good to have a definition of what you're, what you consider old growth. There's actually quite a bit of debate about what constitutes old growth in terms of trees. On line 32, it says that most of the old-growth trees have been documented by the Shade Tree Commission. I think that is unlikely, given the number and the amount of wooded land that we do have, and the fact that I doubt that the Shade Tree Commission is traipsing through people's backyards to find out whether or not we have old-growth trees. There are several trees in my backyard that I think would probably qualify that are not on the Shade Tree list, and there was a, a massive ash tree in my neighbor's backyard until just recently that was never on the list as well. So I think it would be much better to say that, that they have, have done a, they've located many of the old-growth trees.
Would you, you've, you've been talking for a great length of time, and I'd let you go, but would you please concentrate on short comments about what you read in the master plan and not a lot of editorializing, please?
I think I'm using facts, which is, which is the, which is the, the rule.
Yeah, I, I'd like you to just be respectful of the time of the others in the audience and of this board.
Well, I would, I would gladly suspend my comments if I can come back later and let somebody else take a shot.
How much longer do you think it will take?
I am on eight dash four, and we go until, what does this go to? Eight dash nine, so I have a ways to go.
Keep it brief. Keep it brief.
Okay, there, we talked about, um, storage. Uh, the benefits of trees, we began to discuss in, on, on line 35. And I would suggest that carbon storage, absorbing floodwater, assisting with, uh...
One second, Kathy.
Yes.
You're blinking red now. Deborah, we're probably gonna have to swap out the battery.
Yep. So, and just, just to say something about, in terms of being brief, the difficulty in reading this and in commenting on this is not in, in commenting on what is written here, but is also commenting on what is not written here and what was left out. So, so I apologize for the length of my comments, but there is quite a bit that is not here. The, like, as I said, trees, carbon storage, the benefits of trees, carbon storage, absorbing floodwater, assisting with infiltration of groundwater, and reducing ambient temperature and the heat island effect. If anybody who's driven from, from Gillette to, to Millington will notice the change in their thermometer on their car. And I, that's certainly, you can certainly see the difference in the tree cover. Page eight dash five. Let's see, lines four and five, it talks about barred owl. And red-shouldered hawk also occur. Red-shouldered hawk don't only just occur in Long Hill. Red-shouldered hawk actually, Long Hill contains quite a bit of the only available, still available, suitable habitat for both breeding and for migration of the red-shouldered hawk. And this is available on the DEP website. The lines seven through 24 talk about, uh, species that occur in the Great Swamp National Wildlife Refuge, but do not talk about where in the township, other than in the Great Swamp National Wildlife Refuge, some of these species may exist or do exist. This could have been documented in 10 years, and certainly in the, also in the three years that we've had with this particular element. Eight dot two dot seven, stormwater management. Line number 32. It says, entitled "The Upper Passaic River Repairian Project Master Plan", but doesn't really say any, but there's no, there's no, there's no, it's not attached to the, not attached to the document as an appendix. It's not footnoted, and there's, it's not, certainly not a link to it. So there's really, really should be highlighted. That's a pretty important document, not just to the conservation element, but also to the open space element because there's reference to the Passaic River Trail that needs to be developed. But it does not have a map of the Passaic River Trail, as I recall. And it doesn't define what the Passaic River Trail is. That document does. It also gives a list of all of the, all of the properties in town, including blocks and lots of properties that should be bought up with Blue Acres money. Unfortunately, the planning board and the zoning board have not been referring to that document since I have been in town. And one of those properties went up for a tax sale and was bought up by a developer. And the zoning board allowed many variances to build a larger, a larger, a larger footprint dwelling in the floodplain. It also talks about, on line number 35, the stormwater best management practices. This has multiple chapters and multiple appendices. I believe there's 12 chapters and something like four appendices. But there's only two recommendations pulled out here that we should be looking at apparently. One of them does not apply to Long Hill. That is on, begins on 35 and ends on 36, separating stormwater from sanitary drain systems. That does not apply to us. Slowing down stormwater close to the source is the only other recommendation. I think that we should have, for, in a town that, with such a large percentage of wetlands, with, where flooding is such a big problem, that there should be more discussion of what we should be focusing on from that best management practices. Eight dash six, air quality and climate change in, starting on line 11, and then climate change on 16. Neither of these mention the wildfire smoke that we were just dealing with. In either, air, the both, they come from both air quality and climate change. It can be an either or both. On, and the, the headings, subheadings here, air quality, climate change, flooding, and invasive species are very difficult to, I would just suggest that they be bolded. On, on line 18, it talks about, more recently in 2018, which shows you how old this document is, talks about Irene and Sandy, but makes no mention of Ida. In terms of flooding, again, this is a significant challenge for the town. We have one, two, three, four, five lines devoted to flooding. Again, no specifics. Invasive species. Thirty-six. This sentence just makes no sense. I think you need to delete from. The greatest threat from is that of. Page eight dash seven. I will condense some of this. There, this is the recommendations for, for conservation. And I have to say, I don't think, there's hardly any of these that explains who is responsible for any of these goals. So I don't know how anyone can be held accountable for any one of these goals if we don't say who is going to be responsible for enacting any of these actions. There's no, there's no who, there's no how, there's no what. Line two, goal one, talks about the natural resources inventory dated 2000. And it, it suggests that we update that, but it does not say who is going to update that. And it says that it should be utilized for the creation of slash modification to land use ordinances. And isn't that what we did in the land use elements? However, we're not even following our recommendations from our own master plan. So I don't know what the point is of that goal if we've already just tossed it out by, by releasing everything at once when none of these, these first steps were done. Review and revise where necessary ordinances, again, says, does not say who. So it also says the open space envelopment, so in line 17. Open space elements to include land for conservation, flood protection, and critical habitats. The, I don't, I don't believe the open space and, and the open space is, we have an open space and recreation element.
It's really not about the environment, it's about providing, providing, um...
Did the mic die again?
The mic died.
Okay, so I think I was on the open space element. The open space element doesn't seem to be about conservation, flood protection, or critical habitats. It appears to be about providing opportunities for recreation, which is wonderful. But if that's not what the open space element does, then that's kind of a worthless or contradictory goal. Develop a list, oh, sorry, lined 23, goal number five, develop a list of recommended native species of plants. It's actually easier to do it the other way with the, there's a do not plant list. It's published by the Invasive Species Strike Force. I believe it's by the Friends of Hopewell Valley is the, is the NGO that publishes that. And it was to be incorporated into the land use ordinance, and I would ask, is it there? And if it isn't, that's another example of the master plan contradicting itself. So line number 30, talks about monitoring of water quality through testing Passaic River flow through de-snagging efforts. Water quality and de-snagging efforts have nothing really to do with each other. De-snagging is about providing access to people who want to recreate on the river through canoes and kayaks. And while I'm at it, there is a reference, and I don't remember where it is, to non-motorized watercraft on the Passaic River to creating opportunity, I believe it's in the recreation element, using non-motorized watercraft on the Passaic River. Really, that's canoes and kayaks. Non-motorized watercraft includes sailboats, includes rowboats, it includes, it includes paddle boats. It probably includes stand-up paddle boards. The only other, it's possible there's parts of the river that we could use stand-up paddle boards on, but the others, I don't think so. So I think sticking to canoes and kayaks is sufficient. But again, 30, these two, these should be two separate things. Monitoring of water quality and testing the river, which, and then de-snagging should be a completely separate goal. Decreased non-point source pollution does not, has, there's absolutely no suggestion of how we're going to do that. And that would be good to conclude in a stormwater management plan or a stormwater element, which we don't have. Conduct outreach to residents, this is line 33, conduct outreach to residents to encourage the use of chemical fertilizers. I think we mean discourage the use of chemical fertilizers. Again, I would ask who is going to do that outreach? And further, it talks in line 34, that they should use 100% organic and phosphate-free fertilizer near water bodies. Actually, they should use no fertilizer near your water bodies. The water bodies cannot distinguish between chemical and non-chemical. They have pretty much the same reaction in terms of creating algae in the water bodies. And by the way, we don't have a map of our water bodies. Thirty-six. To preserve the scenic valley of the township's natural resources. However, we do not have a natural resource inventory, so we don't know what those are. Tree, encourage, 38, encourage tree preservation and planting efforts. How are we going to do that? There is no information, and who is going to do it? Ten, goal 10, line one of eight dash eight. Support the updating of the Community Forestry Management Plan that was written in 2017, but there's no mention of the fact that forestry management plans generally run for 10 years. Therefore, it will not be due until 2027. Hopefully, this master plan will be done by then. Beginning at the end of line two and into, oh, and this one actually does say who is going to undertake that, which is the, the only, the only goal that does. It says that the Shade Tree Commission should do that. Line six. Increase the community's overall tree canopy. How do we know this is working? Because we have no baseline. And who is going to measure this? Line nine. Promote township initiatives like the Big Tree List to increase the public's appreciation for the value the trees bring. I don't know how that accomplishes that. I can appreciate a big tree, but can say, oh, I can just cut down the other five small trees on my yard. Let's see, line 13. Promote enjoyment of and education. Who is going to do that? Line 15, expand open access, create access to the Passaic River. What do you mean by that? Is that a trail? Is that a boat dock? What is that? And who is going to do that? Seventeen, promote watershed awareness. And through this, that we're supposed to do this, line 17 and 18, we're supposed to do this through the school. No mention of Environmental Day at Millington School, or again, who and how this is going to be done. Night, line 21, goal 19, again, the New Jersey Stormwater Best Management Practices. I'm sorry, 20, goal 20, line 25. Such as green infrastructure, when it's talking about what we should be doing. Again, it's one of 12 chapters in best management practices. But we have now highlighted two issues in that best management practices that includes 12 chapters. Line 26. Focus efforts on the reduction and improvement of stormwater runoff. Who is going to focus, whose efforts are we focusing? Are these the planning board's efforts? Are these environmental commission's efforts? How are we going to incentivize the removal of impervious cover? That is, that is mentioned in line 27. I don't know that people are gonna tear up their driveways. Number 20, line number 29, educate homeowners, landowners, and businesses. I think, as I said before, we also need to educate the township committee. The property maintenance ordinance actually conflicts with the establishment, or that the proposed property maintenance ordinance that came up conflicts with this particular goal. Number 22, the establishment of wildflower meadows is something that would not have been permitted under that property maintenance ordinance. Let's see, eight dash nine, line number one. Conduct annual best management practice and land use education programs. Who is doing this? And who is partnering, this is on line three, who is partnering with the local environmental conservation groups? I have...
Kathy, you have, you've had the microphone now for 40 minutes. I'm gonna give you five more minutes, so please try to pick the most important thing.
We've had 10 years, and I get, I get, we've had 10 years to do this, and we've got, we've had, we've had...
We're not gonna, we're not, we're not gonna argue about the process. You have five more minutes.
Well, actually, it's contained, it's actually contained in this graph, in this draft of the element. It talks about the opportunities for public comment. the element, it talks about the opportunities for public comment. It does not, it does not contain the results of that, those public comment sessions. So there was a, a meeting in Millington and a meeting in Sterling that are mentioned in this document, neither of which, the, the results of neither of which are contained.
We're not going to discuss...
That is part of what's in the master plan, Dennis. So please don't talk over me and take up the rest of my five minutes for, when I am agreeing and, and, and behaving according to your rules, I just want to say, the circulation plan element, that I did not get that much time to, to, to look at, um, talks about, uh, making the township walkable and bikeable. It does not say where, it does not have any idea where. If you look at the Chatham Township Plan, Chatham Township is a very similar township to ours in terms of the development plan and the, and the lack of walkability, and yet they have designated areas where they believe we, they could achieve that. That is not in this plan. Further, there is a, supposedly a map from nineteen ninety-six of where we were supposed to put sidewalks. That is not included here. Further, further, it mentions the sidewalks, uh, that there was progress made, yet there was also no map of what progress was made on those maps, on, on the sidewalks. So there's no way for any, uh, any land use board, the township committee, or the, or the residents to understand where it is we should be looking to put sidewalks. There is no specificity, or very little of any specificity in terms of crosswalks. There is no mention of the increased traffic that is already happening in Millington Village, which is a area in need of re, rehabilitation, so that we will increase, uh, traffic, vehicle traffic down there. It is, Millington, um, Division Avenue is already a place where many people walk. There are no crosswalks, or very few crosswalks. There are no sidewalks and it is a place where you, it would be very difficult to put sidewalks. It is something that should be looked at. The speed limit there is thirty-five miles an hour for the complete length from the, the five, the blinking light at the top of the hill with Long Hill, all the way down to where it meets Valley Road, even though this is either a very densely populated, um, very densely populated, um, residential area, a commercial area where people walk to, and then a slightly less densely populated residential area. At, with these, and, and we also have a now full, uh, warehouse, light industrial, uh, area at the Tifa site. So we have additional traffic there. There should be some consideration of what's going on. There is also nothing about the studies that were done on Oak Road, Oaks Road, in terms of traffic. There is no mention of the specific areas in town or ranking the specific areas in town where the most, um, where the most accidents happen. The majority of the data from the circulation plan element came from the county and not from our own police department. And there was an awful lot that was pushed, pushed on the police department, um, in this particular element, so I think you should consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other hands? In that case, I will declare this hearing to be closed. The next event that affects the master plan will be a discussion of these comments at our meeting on November fourteenth. The next meeting of the board, uh, is two weeks from tonight.